From some who were listening in or listened after, so thank you and and welcome to our new librarian.
Thank you, Councilmember Udi.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Huang.
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tal.
No question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion and a second to wait for the readings?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tal.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, item number one is a proclamation for National Library Week. And I, as I understand it, we will be calling forward our new librarian, Linda Vera. Thank you. And on behalf of the whole council, we welcome you and we loved your enthusiasm Monday night. April 3rd through 9th, 2022 is National Library Week, a time to highlight the essential role libraries, librarians and library workers play in transforming lives and strengthening communities. In San Marino, we are additionally fortunate to have approximately eighty-five community volunteers who do wonderful work within and around the library. And we include them in this special appreciation. The theme for this year's National Library Week is "Connect with Your Library", which promotes the idea that libraries are places to get connected to technology by using broadband, computers, and other resources. Libraries also offer opportunities to connect with media programs, ideas, and classes in addition to books. Most importantly, libraries connect communities to each other. Libraries of all types continue to go above and beyond to keep their computer communities connected by expanding resources and embracing inclusion in their programming, resources, and collections. And we all know how incredibly important that has been over these last two years to have had this beautiful connectivity with our library. The City Council would like to encourage all community members to visit the Crowell Public Library in person or online to explore and access services and programs, not only during National Library Week, but throughout the year. The Crowell Public Library supports us by providing access to current and reliable resources for everyone's information, from babies to senior citizens. In addition to providing programs to support literacy and lifelong learning, the library is proud to support everyone's quality of life, including passport processing and health screenings. For more information, please do visit the city's library website at thecityofsanmarino.org/crowell. I will have a proclamation for the library in the future. We do not have it this evening, but please accept the heartfelt appreciation from your entire city council. And thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember? Okay, moving along, we go from libraries to vector control. We are so pleased to have Mr. Scott Quong here, who has been our San Marino representative with the Greater Los Angeles District and has been appointed to his third term in November 2021. He is joined by Mary Joy Coburn, who will be giving a presentation regarding the vector control district. And in a moment, we will ask you to begin, but your term of service has been awesome, Scott. We are so proud of you and we are excited to hear what you have to say tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Is Mary Joy on right now? I know she's going to be there. Is she on?
Yes, sorry, I have to ask her to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Good evening, members of San Marino City Council. My name is Scott. I'm your trustee for the mosquito vector control district for the Greater Los Angeles County. And today I'm joined by Mary Joy, who will be giving a presentation on mosquitoes. As right now it is March, we're preparing for summer when mosquito, when the mosquito season really kicks in. We would like to arm the city and its residents with knowledge on what to do with mosquitoes and how to prevent them from breeding so that we can minimize the impact they have in the city. Now, I want to start with asking a very important question as MJ, how are you doing today?
I'm doing great.
Go ahead, MJ.
Yeah, I'm doing well. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so let me get started. Thank you, trustee Quong. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, staff, and San Marino residents. So someone will be clicking for me, seems like?
Yes.
All right, so we'll be talking about mosquitoes in San Marino and what you need to know. So next slide, please. So just a little background about us, vector control is a special district formed in 1952. So we're actually celebrating our seventieth anniversary this year. And our mission is to protect residents from mosquitoes and mosquito-borne diseases. We serve thirty-six cities and unincorporated portions of LA County, as you can see on the map there. And that's over six million residents. Next slide. Thank you. So we provide something called an Integrated Vector Control Management Approach, which is a combination of disease surveillance. We have our scientists go out, trap for mosquitoes, identify them, and then test them for diseases. And then we have mosquito management, which is our operation, which is probably what most people see a lot more. They are our staff to drive around the city, inspect, and and treat if needed. And then my department is education and outreach. And we do a lot of presentations for city councils, as well as any home association, service groups, Boys and Girls Club, and also into classrooms, primarily fifth graders. Next slide. This map here, it looks small, but it's actually a compilation of the services that we have provided to the city of San Marino from 2020 to the current year. So I'm going to read some of the items here because it seems a little small for some people. As far as residential inspections, as well as public spaces like green belt, we have inspected three hundred forty-eight areas. For unmaintained swimming pools, that's two hundred sixty-eight. And unmaintained swimming pools are typically pools, swimming pools in people's backyards that are green. And if they're green, they may be breeding mosquitoes. So that's something that we work with the with the residents and ensuring that it's not breeding mosquitoes. Sometimes we put mosquito fish in there, sometimes some kind of treatment. Or we work with the resident to to ensure that it's okay and it's not causing a public health threat to the neighborhood. And then underground storm drains also, and that's been inspected a hundred and nine times since 2020. Next slide, please. Why should we care about mosquitoes? Well, mosquitoes are the deadliest animal in the world, causing seven hundred thousand human fatalities each year. Mosquitoes can also transmit diseases like West Nile virus, Zika, dengue, and chikungunya. And it only takes one infected mosquito to cause an outbreak in a community. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. A next slide. So fun fact, only female mosquitoes bite. They need our blood meal for protein in order to lay eggs. And an adult mosquito can lay about, on average, two hundred fifty eggs each time. And they they pretty much are in the spend most of their time in the water. It's aquatic life stage. And you can see the life cycle here. The whole process typically takes about a week, about seven days. But when it's warmer, especially in the summertime, then it accelerates about four to five days. Next slide. So this kind of shows, actually, this is the larva that's moving their ring. And then this is the pupa, and then they emerge as adults. It's just a fun little close up because some people don't really get to see that. Next slide, please. So there are two mosquitoes that we consider a threat in LA County. There's the two left mosquitoes is the brown one on the left side. And that is capable of transmitting West Nile virus. The one on the right is invasive eighties mosquito. It's black and white. The red that you see in the abdomen means that it had just had a blood meal. And the black and white mosquito is the one that's been a lot more aggressive lately. And it's the one that a lot of people have been experiencing as daytime biters. Next slide. Regarding West Nile virus, this is pretty much, these are the numbers for West Nile virus. Can you click one more time? There should be a map. Thank you. So it just shows that West Nile virus is present throughout LA County. And some of the numbers there in California in 2021, last year, two thousand two hundred mosquitoes were positive for West Nile virus. As far as human cases in California, it was a one hundred twenty-six. In our jurisdiction, we had sixty-eight mosquitoes that were positive for mosquito samples. I mean, so that's involved when we when we trapped them. And for San Marino, which is probably most relevant to the residents here, in 2020, we had no infection from mosquitoes, but in 2021, there was one. To note that this is actually pretty low compared to other years in the past. We like to look at things as a five-year average. So this is, this is, this has been a pretty low year in 2020 and 2021. But 2022 is just starting now. Next slide, please. Yes, it just says that West Nile virus is all over LA County. So yes, if you look at it, you're like, okay, San Marino, we've only had one mosquito or one sample of mosquito that has been positive. But we know that not everybody just stays in their neighborhood or in their city. We like to travel to different areas or in county, different parts of of LA. So we do have some infestations more in other areas. So that's just something that we do want to tell the residents about. Next slide, please. And so these are also just the numbers in the past year. We kind of talked about them, but it's kind of, it's nice to see on the map. And once again, as I mentioned, San Marino had one in 2021. Next slide. The other mosquito that I wanted to talk about is the black and white mosquito. It is an aggressive daytime biter. And they are capable of transmitting Zika, dengue, chikungunya, yellow fever, canine heartworm. Note that we have not had any local transmission as of late, especially due to COVID. The borders have been closed off. The people have not been traveling. The concern is, once we start traveling again and someone travels to an area where there is active transmission of the disease, they could have the virus in their system. There we call them viremic. They could travel back to the city of San Marino. And because we know that these mosquitoes are present in the area, if these mosquitoes bite those people that are viremic, now the mosquitoes are carrying the virus and could bite other people, and there could be a local outbreak. So that's something that we are trying to educate the residents so that we can prevent that from happening. Next slide. This map on the right here is pretty interesting. The blue pretty much shows the the presence of eighties mosquitoes. In 2013, when it first started, we we saw them in the corner, the little cluster in South El Monte. And then as the years progress, you can see them slowly moving upward into the into the San Fernando Valley. But you can see San Marino there. It definitely has these mosquitoes already present. These mosquitoes thrive in urban environments. They thrive both indoors and outdoors, homes, offices, in cars, in backyards. They are container breeders. They just need a little bit of water for them to lay their eggs and go through their life cycle. And as we've mentioned, they are aggressive daytime biters. They typically bite around our ankles, so they're also commonly known by the media as ankle biters. And they often leave large welts because a lot of us are not used to these mosquitoes. The welts are a cause of an allergic reaction to the saliva. When the mosquitoes pretty much poke you or bite you with their proboscis, they also leave some of their saliva, and hence the bump is a cause of that allergic reaction. Next slide. I get asked many times, do mosquitoes transmit COVID-19? The answer is no, mosquitoes do not transmit COVID-19. Next slide. Okay, so what can you do about it? It seems pretty simple. Get rid of standing water around your home. We know that mosquitoes breed in water. They thrive in water. So just remove water, empty containers, scrub them because the mosquitoes lay their eggs on the interior wall of containers. And they could live there for over a year, sometimes up to ten years. It's important to scrub those containers. And they're also very smart. They they understand that if there was water there, there could be water there again. So they just adhere to the wall, waiting for the water to be put back in the containers. So we we recommend that you take time regularly, especially in the summertime, every week to just remove any any water in any of the containers in your backyard. And if you don't need that container, get rid of them. Next slide, please. We can click again. Okay, and then we have this checklist on our website, on tiptotickaction.org. It has all the common breeding sources around the home and the recommendation of what you can do to eliminate the mosquito breeding. Next slide, please. The other thing that residents can do is wear insect repellent. Anything that contains the active ingredients D, the carried in IR thirty-five thirty-five, or oil of lemon eucalyptus. If you wear that on exposed skin, then it it can definitely protect you. Make sure that you read the labels on the back of the contain of the of the repellent because it would tell you how often you would need to reapply. Can you click a couple more times, please? The same thing. Okay, next. So that's what it looked like for the active ingredients earlier. Okay, on this map, we are often asked, when is mosquito season? Because we live in beautiful Southern California, we have wonderful weather all year long. But that also means that mosquitoes thrive when it's warm. So they're pretty much present all year round, but they are most active around from May to October. And that is when we need to be extra vigilant. But we do ask that you remain vigilant all year long because you still have mosquitoes present right now. Next slide, please. So just highlights, I did talk about a lot of things. Make sure you get rid of stagnant water around your home. Mosquitoes are capable of transmitting some diseases. So as a public health agency, that's definitely something that we're trying to prevent. Tip out water, toss out any containers that you don't need. Wear insect repellent and share the information with your neighbors and your family and friends. There's our QR code if you want more information or go to tiptotickaction.org to to download a lot of their brochures and resources. Final slide, I believe. All right, and there's additional information for our website or for service requests. You can call that number there. You can also follow us on our social media account. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Quong, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point? It was extremely informative.
I would like to ask if you guys have any question for me or Mary. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Huang?
No, no question, thank you.
Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
No, thank you. It was helpful.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Tal?
Do you spray the standing water in our gutters?
Yes, we do.
And how often does that occur?
The the vector team do have a routine schedule where they go around the city. And depending on how the standing water is, we could either spray with mineral oil, which which basically puts a layer of film on top because the mosquitoes need to surface up to breathe. That will kill them. Another way, again, depending on the size of of the issue, we could put a larva site in there. And what these do is like a little briquet, it sinks inside. And when the mosquitoes larvae eat it, they don't actually mature into adults.
What's that called?
It's a larva side, larva side. It's kind of like, kind of like that. It's like green or brown, depending on what brand. It's about this big, like a bottle cap, and then we would throw a few on in there.
Thank you, Scott.
I will also email you guys the slides so that you guys can have it, okay?
Very, very informative, and thank you both. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Goodbye now. Okay, item under under new business, item number three, award of professional architectural services agreement. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item before you this evening is our recommendation to award a professional services agreement to Dewberry Architects for the preparation of a utilization and space needs study for the San Marino Police Department. To summarize the information included in our staff report, proposals were solicited from firms qualified to perform this work. Five proposals were received, and the three highest-ranked firms were interviewed by Chief Contra, his staff, and Public Works. All of us were very impressed with Dewberry's experience with similar facilities and their extensive knowledge on this subject. We were also enthralled with the community engagement plan they have proposed that will help outline the options necessary to provide the police department with an appropriate working environment suitable for the next twenty years. The department, therefore, recommends your approval of a contract with Dewberry Architects in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. If approved, the study is expected to be completed this summer. That concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. For questions from council, council, councilmember Stephen Huang?
No, no question, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question concerning something you just mentioned. First, I'll start with, was this contract or this process reviewed with a public safety commission? And did they give a recommendation in on this?
No, we did not review this with the Public Safety Commission. No, we did not review this with the public safety commission.
Okay, and they haven't seen it or at all?
No.
And is there a reason for that?
Uh, this is something that was budgeted. Uh, when we get to the public engagement portion, we did inform the public safety commission that this was in the works and that we would be using them as one of our primary forums for community engagement on this work.
Okay, and I have another question and it had to do with exactly the community engagement. I noticed, and I'll direct my council members to 54 of our, um, agenda packet. And it talks, um, on that page about the community support for the project and sort of some of the, the, um, community engagement, community oriented activities, which I greatly appreciated. But then I looked on the next page, which is page 55, the schedule, and I don't see any community engagement on the schedule and their task list. So is there something else that talks about where the community? And even if you go two pages later, on page 57, uh, which is the estimated work plan, um, I don't see any community wide. I don't know who the stakeholders are, but I always assume that is mostly the chief and, and his leadership in the police department as well as your department. And I, I don't know, um, is there a community group or who the stakeholders are?
The stakeholders would be those folks you just identified. They, they do have, um, they did commit to doing community engagement. And I, I do see that they didn't explicitly put that in their scope. So we'll make sure that they, they do that. That was part of why we are, are recommending them was their, um, their program was, was very impressive. And it's something that we wanted to, um, have the community involved with.
Okay, and I just don't see it here. So I was kind of surprised by that as well. Um, though I'm glad to see a local, at least a firm with a local office as, and some experience in Southern California. But, um, I'm wondering also, are they just going to look at the current site? Where they are, are they going to consider any other space in the city? Um, should, uh, larger or should a community room, meeting spaces, you know, be part of what's recommended in the, uh, needs assessment, et cetera?
We've left it, uh, open-ended because we do realize that there are a variety of options. We did not want to start them off in a box. We wanted them to present us with all of the different options that, uh, could, could be possible. But after they do their, their, uh, utilization study, then they'll look at needs. And from that, they'll compare that against the current site, the entire city hall campus, any other places there may be in San Marino. They are aware of the lack of available, uh, property that's, um, vacant that we could afford. So they, they've already started thinking about what kinds of things, but we didn't want to start them off down a path of, of being narrow. So, uh, part of their expertise is looking at not only the, the site that you have, but also other locations. Um, that's all part of their due diligence in making a recommendation to us.
All right, those are my questions, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Tal?
Uh, just to comment, in the future, would you put in, uh, who the other, um, or the bids, the other bids that were received? That, uh, i- is that allowed?
It is not allowed under the Business and Professions Code. We are obliged to, uh, select based on qualifications and then open up their cost proposal. If we're not able to negotiate a contract with them, then we open up the second cost proposal. We don't take a look at what the cost proposals are.
I, I thought in the past I've seen, uh, uh, other people have been putting this is, if someone bids on a project.
Not for architects and engineers.
So this is specific.
This is specific just to architects.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Helpful education, I have no questions. Um, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Um, I don't believe there is anybody here to speak. Am I correct? No one wishes to speak on this item? Uh, do we have anyone virtually who would like to address this?
I do not have any requests for comment on this item.
Thank you, I'll bring the item back to council for discussion. And, um, do I have any comments or questions or anything further? Uh, Councilmember Huang?
No, no comments, uh, I think we can support this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shepard Romi?
Um, I'm fine with it, except I'm concerned about the lack of community, total lack of community engagement and, um, in this.
Okay, Councilmember Yudi?
Uh, no comment, looking forward to the results.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Tal?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing further to add. Uh, do we have a motion?
I move to award a professional architectural service agreement in the amount of $121,643 to Dewberry Architects, which is attached as attachment one to the staff report for the San Marino Police Department Space Utilization and Needs Assessment Study Project, number 21-30-1001, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you, a second?
A second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Romi?
Uh, yes, if we get community engagement in here.
Councilmember Yudi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tal?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, and thank you. Okay, item number four, approval of ordinance number O-22-1387. First reading, uh, may we please have, um, a presentation from City Clerk Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. The city currently has five boards or commissions or committees acting as advisory bodies to the city council. The last holistic review and update to their advisory, advisory bodies policies was done in 2010. Since then, there have been a few individual advisory body changes, but not another holistic review. So we went ahead and conducted one, and this year's holistic review resulted in a few staff recommendations. First, staff is recommending that we learn, um, align the term start dates for the advisory bodies. Some of them start June 1st, some of them start July 1st, and we're recommending that all of them begin June 1st. The library board, um, has a June 1st term start date that's dictated by the state, so that can't change. That's why I would like to move it to that one. Uh, second, staff is also recommending to dissolve the recreation commission. The recreation commission has been on hiatus for several years, awaiting, first awaiting the completion of the recreation re-envisioning program. The re-envisioning proposal was adopted in April 2020. However, COVID-19 pushed the need to fill the commission to the back burner. Recruitment efforts to fill the recreation commission have since proven difficult as there was not enough interest to fully staff the commission. And this is actually consistent with recruitments prior to the commission going on hiatus. Since the commission has been on hiatus, the community services department has been successfully running recreation programming. Programming and management has been shifted and improved. An improved communications plan is being developed to gather resident feedback on recreation programming as well as other city services. The community services department's success, along with the difficulties in finding enough residents to serve on the commission, have, have led to the staff's recommendation to dissolve the recreation commission. The recreation liaisons were consulted, um, Vice Mayor Tal and Councilmember Yudi, and they have indicated their support for this action, given the information that they had. Third, staff is also recommending several changes to advisory body, meeting date, location and start time. Uh, the code currently deals with all of these in various ways, some by resolution, some not. Staff is recommending that we change that, so all of them are, um, set by council resolution. This will allow for flexibility and align all of the boards, advisory bodies. In addition, staff took this opportunity to talk to the chairs of the advisory bodies about changing meeting dates or times. And three of the advisory bodies did take, um, are asking for changes. The first is Public Safety Commission. They would like to change their meetings to the, to the Public Safety Commission, and they would like to change their meeting to the third Monday of each month, instead of the first Monday of each month. And they would like a 6:00 PM start time instead of a 7:00 PM. And the planning commission would like to change their start time to 6:00 PM, the date remaining the same. And the design review committee would like to change their start time to 6:00 PM, commencing on June 1st of this year. The library board does not have any preferred changes of this type. Finally, staff has also made, um, various administrative updates to the code. Um, for instance, uh, it still references the planning and building director, so updating that to say community development director. Um, and then making other grammar and formatting changes to align to make all the advisory bodies the same. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions as lo- as well as, um, City Manager Marloes, and she's been here longer and has some more historical context on some of this.
Very helpful report, thank you. Uh, may we start with Councilmember Yudi?
Oh yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, did you look at the scope or responsibilities or the charters for each of these bodies to see if they needed to be updated?
No, we did not look at the scopes.
Okay, you, you might want to consider that if we're going to refresh it, make sure it's appropriate for where we are today. And then with these bodies, how many have alternates on them?
They all have alternates, alternate positions.
Do you think we need the alternates? Because with the shortage of good people to, um, enlist for these different bodies, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have fewer or no alternates so the good people can be put to good use?
That was something that we looked at. Um, and I know I was looking, doing research on why alternates were added. And I noticed that when the planning commission alternates that were added, it was hopeful that the alternates would become more experienced. So then when they became a full member, they'd be able to. But I think what's actually proven out is that we don't have an issue making quorum with our bodies typically. So alternates aren't really needed or used. Um, so they may be more knowledgeable, but not necessarily more experienced. Um, and then, oh, and we're also, you know, because they're not gaining that experience that we're hoping in, but they're still doing the same amount of work as full members because they're expected to, um, read all the staff reports and come prepared in case they're needed to. They're not really able to use their time perhaps in other, you know, shorter term task forces or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Shepard Romi?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was concerned about the, or am concerned about the rec department elimination. And I wondered, um, about some of the statements in here. When you said there has been a recruitment, when was the last time there was a recruitment? And for, uh, recreation commissioners?
I believe that was last year. And we had, as you know, the ordinance calls for seven members on the commission and all seven, uh, seats were up and we had two applications.
I don't remember that, but I, it was it during COVID? And was there?
Yes, it was just last year, I believe.
Okay, and, um, has there been any consideration of, because I think of, um, planning commission, design review, committee and public, um, safety commission are all five persons with an alternate or two, depending. So was there any discussion among staff or whoever suggested eliminating it completely to reduce the number, to be more in line with our other commissions, to try for five? Um, as opposed to, and I will just say, the reason in some instances you do need alternates for design review and planning commission specifically is sometimes people are not able to sit in judgment or in comment. As we know, if you're within a certain amount of projects in town, which actually happens more, more than, uh, not, um, is that some people have to recuse themselves for a specific item on the agenda. And that's really where the alternates come into play and get experienced in addition to somebody being absent, wholly absent. So it's important to have for those two, but I don't know. For example, rec commission, you'd never recuse yourself, um, if you were serving on it in the same way, perhaps. So alternates might be something that also, uh, could be a fungible item depending on the committee, um, commission.
Sure, to both of those points, I think you're absolutely right about the alternates. If you were willing to make some adjustments, and as City Clerk Baker said, we did talk about it, but alternates are a potentially sensitive topic. And so we didn't, we certainly don't want to, uh, give any disrespect to our current alternates who are providing amazing service. Um, but it is true that you could potentially see the need on the statutory bodies like planning commission, design review. It's harder to find a statutory need for library board or the rec commission if we were to still have it, uh, or a public safety commission. Um, they don't have a vote, they aren't supposed to be fully operational members. It's hard to see what the alternate role does there, um, in that situation. So I thi- I think you're right about that. If you wanted to draw distinction, it would be easy to do. Um, to your first, uh, question, we did consider changing the rec commission structure around. And that was actually how we got to this recommendation. The initial conversation was, okay, well, if we're going to have a recreation commission, it should be five people. It's, you know, just a different structure than all the others. And as we started to continue it, discussion more and more internally with liaisons, with staff, um, it's been challenging to fill, even before COVID, it was a little challenging. Uh, it hasn't existed in several years. The idea was to wait until the recreation re-envisioning was over. It's been over kind of for a while, and it's also been COVID. And there's great programming going on. Um, it didn't get a lot of public interaction to begin with. And so although we started with, okay, restructure to five, eventually we got to, this might be a way to, I think, as the city clerk said, and actually I think Councilmember Yudi said it also, free up people to participate on other bodies that we have. Um, and maybe there are different needs that they could serve.
All right, thank you. I, I think that was it. Just let me look at my notes for just a second.
Double check.
Okay, and the other question, I'm sorry, it did have to do with how many times, um, some of these meet. Obviously, the ones here we have are monthly. I'm sorry, the ones on page 139, the standing ones. But as far as rec department, I was confused because the summary paragraph talks about, doesn't have any discussion about the number of times they met per year. And then it said it was, the last line is they increased the meetings to six. That was the first, the final version of, but I don't, we don't have them in this packet. So I didn't have any way to go back and see what it was or how it bounced around. So if you can explain how many times they used to meet, um, that would be helpful for me.
So records are challenging to locate sometimes in our city. And, um, City Clerk Baker did a yeoman's job of trying to find what data she could, but there were pieces that were missing. Uh, and so there's some history that we don't have. We do know that the last iteration included a move to six meetings. They were not meeting monthly. They, I'm trying to remember, I think, took maybe breaks in the summer and, you know, it wasn't exactly every other month in that structure. So there, there were some missing pieces.
All right, and, and I wanted to thank you very much for putting this together because I'm sure to recreate it might be difficult. So your effort, I, I'm just was curious and, um, about some of it, what was written here because I don't know myself. So I appreciate you putting this together for us, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Huang?
Uh, no, I don't have any question, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tal?
I have no questions.
Okay, um, I had just a few. Um, council, Councilmember Yudi brought up the charters of the different groups. Uh, and this might be to Dr. Merlow. Um, when those are reviewed, um, and perhaps in need of modernization, would that possibly affect the ordinance?
Uh, we would, if we changed the scopes, we would come back to you with a new ordinance changing that. I think our view on this one was that this was more housekeeping and administrative and not substantive. But, um, I will just share that the city departments are thinking about doing a revision to all of our kind of mission statements next year. And this could be easily folded in to ask commissioners and commissions for their thoughts about their restructuring. We would bring it back to you if there were recommendations.
So we wouldn't necessarily have conflicting documents if we approved this and still had the charters as they are?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, um, is the library board structure statutory with regard to the number of, um, members?
I don't think it is. Um, the, certainly the requirement for alternates, there's no such requirement. That's a, a San Marino addition. Um, the education code prescribes term length and the start date of the term, but I don't necessarily think it does, although lightning fingers Joe Montes over here, I think, is searching quickly to see if he can find something on the internet. But I don't think that that structure is governed by the ed code. I know the alternates are not.
Okay, we may, we may get an update on that.
We may get an update.
Uh, in the meantime, I have another question and I may not be reading this correctly. On page 142.02.08.06, um, this is in reference to vacancies and special meetings, um, where it says the planning commission, um, may call special meetings by the action of the chairperson or any three members. Then on page 150 at the bottom, um, let's see, someplace I saw where that was, maybe I have the wrong location, uh, where it was struck, struck, yes. Are you finding that, Vice Mayor?
Uh, yeah, but you're talking about the.
That's designed review. Yes, but I thought I saw it someplace else where it was removed, but also planning commission. Then in that case, since I can't cite what I'm, um, thinking of, I will pass on that one. And just to confirm, um, each of the existing bodies wouldn't have, um, a, a problem with their current structure meeting as they, um, are set going forward with the new times, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, the staff liaisons for each advisory body talk to the chairs.
Great, okay, and.
And I believe we have an update.
Yes.
The statutory requirement is five.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. And, uh, I think that has gotten us through our questions. So at this point. So at this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody here? I see nobody, I believe, wishing to speak on this item. Do we have anyone virtually?
I do not have any requests for comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. At this point, then, I'd like to bring this back to council for discussion. And why don't we, again, go in, I'm so sorry, our same order, Councilmember Udi?
Christina, thank you for cleaning these dirty dishes. And I do think it makes sense to eliminate the alternatives for the Public Safety and the Library Board. I can appreciate and understand the need for them on planning and design review.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
I think I said thank you already, I appreciate the work on this. I do believe that we need to still have, especially now that we've gone through a re-envisioning process, and it actually started right when COVID hit, or it ended, I'm sorry, our new re-envision would have been kicked off during, completely during COVID, and also during that time, we had a couple of changes of leadership. And so I'm excited to work with our new director, and really appreciate that she's here. But I do think the community, all of these things that are put on by that department, particularly through Rec., but our library as well is much loved, and I would like to see at least a five-person commission continue as we get the real re-envision going and work through some of those things, perhaps, helping where they can, but at least being on board to be that sounding board as we move forward with a more active program. And I think it's a perfect time to do that. And I think five individuals would be a good amount. It doesn't sound as unwieldy as a seven, eight, or 10, or whatever, some of the past groups, and hopefully that is something that we can do some outreach to the community and get some great people involved, because I think it's near and dear to many of our families, and they just have to be a little bit more aware that this is up before them, to get some people to turn out for it. So I'm hoping we won't eliminate it completely tonight, but we can downsize it and see if that's possible to get the recruitments we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
No, no comments, but thank you.
Councilmember Tolts?
Yes, I join in the thanks. And after listening to Councilmember Shepard Rami, I would be agreeable to striking reference to that out of this ordinance in looking at, or after, out of this resolution and out of this motion tonight, in looking at a five-person committee to perhaps meet quarterly to see how that works out, especially since we do have a new director of the Community Services. And, you know, hopefully we will move forward with a building to house our Recreation Department. It may be too soon to turn off the lights on them. So I would be willing to at least strike that reference tonight and to go into, to find a better resolution to that issue.
Okay, thank you. And I am in agreement with comments that have been made. So at this point, do we have a motion?
I move to waive full reading and introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance number zero-dash-two-two-dash-one-three-eight-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Marino, amending the city code to align board and commission term start dates, align board and commission meeting times, and eliminate the alternatives on the Public Safety Commission and the Library Board of Trustees.
Hey, do I have a second?
Can I ask a question? Do we want to state five people for the reconstituted, or is that a separate motion? If we're going to reconstitute a smaller Rec. Commission?
Well, that's not in this ordinance.
Okay.
If I could get clarification on the, on the motion, does the motion include the?
Decommissioning?
No, the, the alternates for Planning Commission and DRC only, and elimination of the alternates for the other commissions?
It only, it only eliminates the alternatives for the Public Safety Commission and Library Board of Trustees.
Okay. And then with regard to the Recreation Commission and the constitution of that, the ordinance, your code is pretty complicated about how the measure or how the composition of the commission is comprised, who's on it, et cetera. So I would suggest that the only change to what's presented to you tonight for the motion be just elimination of Section 5 of this draft ordinance.
And I think that's what was intended by your motion, is that correct? You did not mention decommission.
I did not mention decommission, right, on purpose.
So it would be striking Section 5 of the?
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance.
Correct. So, so dealing with reconstituting the Recreation Commission and how many members it would be, and all, that'll have to come back as a separate matter.
Yes, that's, I figured as much.
Okay, so do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, row call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tolts?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can I just be clear? So we've made the change on all the housekeeping things, we've eliminated alternates on Library Board and Public Safety Commission, and we're going to come back to you with an ordinance for Recreation Commission, based on what we heard tonight. Right, okay.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, do any council members wish to pull any of the items from consent? As a reminder, you may vote no on a specific calendar item without pulling the item for discussion. Is anybody who would like to pull anything, Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Udi?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
No.
Council, Vice Mayor Tolts?
I just have a correction to the staff report on item 16, and that is, it states near the San Marino Community Church first held its Easter service at Lacy Park in 2020. That service has been going on for decades. So I don't know if that was, if it was, it's been going on since I was a child. So perhaps we want to either strike that from the report or find the exact date in which they started.
Thanks for the question.
Thank you. And I'd like to pull item number 10, please. So at this point, I would, do I have a motion for five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tolts?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. On item number 10, I guess I would direct this to both Director Johnson and City Manager Marlowe. Could you just explain a little bit about what this agreement is about? And not, not in huge detail, but just a little bit more comprehensive?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I also have with us today, the representative from San Marino Unified School District, Judy, is she with us? Yeah, so they came to us, approached us last fall, Superintendent De La Torre, as well as Judy and her HR team, and asked if we would assist them in meeting the California Education Code for the library services aspect of the requirements that they need to meet, to become, you know, meet the code on their end. So we said sure, I met with them, and we began discussion to understand, what's the scope of the services that you're really asking us for? Well, it says it in the agreement that should they need help with curriculum development, meetingly on a quarterly basis to support their needs in terms of, you know, their, their school librarian to fill that role, because they no longer have those positions within the school district payroll. So I'm going to ask Judy to weigh in, if she could, please. I know I'm, feel like I'm speaking out of school a little bit, because the request came from the school district, not?
We will go to school.
Yeah.
Thank you. Judy?
Hi there, Judy Correnti, thank you for letting me join your meeting tonight. I have been working with Kathy for several months on this agreement, and we are required under Education Code to have library services available for the students in the district. We, and those services can be provided in two ways, either by a credentialed librarian or by a public library in the community. And so we have not had a credentialed librarian on our staff. We have at the elementary schools, library assistants, which help students with books and reading, things of that nature. At the middle school, we have a library assistant who also works with technology, and at the high school, also a library assistant. So what we are attempting to do in our partnership is to have our students just able to access the public library system to utilize the resources that are already there and provided by your librarians.
That is a really helpful, quick explanation, Dr. Marlowe or liaisons, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
I think it's another great example of the city supporting school districts, so thank you.
Wonderful, the partnership feels great, then. Thank you so much, and I appreciate a little more detail that you were able to offer us. With that, I'd like to move to approve item 10 on the consent calendar, is there a second?
I'll second.
Excuse me, Mayor, opportunity for public comment?
My apologies, yes, thank you. Anyone wish to speak on this item?
There are no requests for comment.
Thank you, Director Johnson, also, we appreciate it. Okay, and we appreciate doing things the right way. And did we get the second? Thank you. Row call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tolts?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Do we have any written communication or public writings for distribution? Hearing of none, we will move forward. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? If so, please so kind as to state your name, and if you desire your address for the record. We are not allowed to engage in any issue, but you are welcome to speak freely. Is there anybody here wishing to speak? Being none, is there anybody online?
There are no requests for comment.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to bring us back to council for future agenda items. Is there a council member present who would like an item on the agenda in the future? Councilmember Wong?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
No, not at this time.
Councilmember Udi?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, and I have none either. So with that, I will adjourn to?
A couple of things, I also wanted to make a statement about, and you're, we could adjourn.
Please, go ahead.
And I would like?
Oh, adjournment, my apologies, I skipped it, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
Thank you, I wanted to, sorry, I wanted to adjourn this meeting in honor of the civilians of Ukraine and join with them and the awful unprovoked invasion by Russian forces of a peaceful country, and ask that we take that into consideration. And I don't know if we want to consider doing a resolution. I know other governmental agencies have done that worldwide, condemning it, and we're small, but they, my understanding is that even the Republic of San Marino, which is equally small, is now on the enemy list by the Russian authorities. So it's kind of crazy, and I don't know where it will lead, but I would like to adjourn the meeting today in honor of those civilians who are fighting for their lives.
That is a very thoughtful adjournment, thank you so much. Councilmember Tolts?
Yes, I would like to join in the request for the citizens of Ukraine, but also David Mellon passed away, David Mellon was 90 years old. He was born and raised in the city of San Marino and eventually served our country during the Korean War. David was also a beloved postman for many areas of the city of San Marino. And I do have to say that in conflict, he was a client of mine and a friend of mine, and, but I would like to put his name on the roster of someone we're adjoining in honor of.
Thank you very much, and that sounds most worthy. Any other adjournments? And I'd like to join Councilwoman Shepard Rami in possibly getting that proclamation from our small but mighty city. My apologies, any other adjournments?
Mayor, we normally do proclamations at a Wednesday night meeting, but it seems to me that this is a bit timely. Would you be comfortable if we have this on your agenda next Friday?
Absolutely, thank you so much. Seeing no other matters, we will adjourn to closed session, thank you.